Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Shelby Township Planning Commission Meeting of June 26, 2017, to order. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Dallow?
Here.
Mr. Seiko?
Here.
Ms. Cassali, absent. Mr. Oppone?
Here.
Mr. Wozniak?
Here.
Chairman Moffett is absent. Acting Chairman will be Mr. Turner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And I'm filling in tonight for Mr. Moffett, who is away on business. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Hear no opposition? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of amendments from our June 12, 2017, meeting.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Tonight, we have four items on our agenda: one public hearing and three site plans. The first is a rezoning petition, number 0117, for Chris Cusno. This property located between Shaner Road and Hayes Road, between 25 and 26 Mile Road. I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby. Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant: Christopher Cusno, Diverse Real Estate LLC, 13001, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. Rezoning request: From R1, One Family Residential, to R1B, the rezoning application includes a site plan for 594 residential units. Location: vacant land between Shaner and Hayes and 25 Mile Road and 26 Mile Road. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, June 26, 2017, at 7:00 in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published June 11, 2017. There were 67 property owners. Nine utilities and two applicants were notified by First Class Mail on June 9, 2017.
Thank you. Mrs. Dennewith, does the notice meet all requirements, legal statutes, state statute and local ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Can you explain the uses under this and whether this is appropriate for rezoning?
Mr. Chair, the residential uses are largely set forth under Article 9, particularly sections 9.00 and 9.10. This is a rezoning request from an R1 to an R1B, One Family Residential to One Family Residential. And this would be a typical rezoning under a planned unit development, which is listed under Article 13 of the Shelby Township Ordinance, particularly Section 13.37.
Okay, thank you. Also, I want to note, we did receive some correspondence in our packet, plus four additional ones tonight, and then I was handed prior to the meeting, 41 signatures of 41 residents of Preston Pines who are opposed to the rezoning. Any other additional correspondence?
We did, Mr. Chair. We did receive the four, the letters, like you had mentioned previously, in our packet. The first one is anonymous. I have no idea who this concerned resident of Shelby Township is, but their objection is to the lot size and density. We did receive correspondence from Steve and Sarah Deagle. They're opposing this due to density. We did receive another piece of correspondence from Lynn Schultz. She is opposing her displeasure and concern about the density and the traffic and tract housing. And then our last correspondence that we did receive prior to the meeting was from Earl and Linda Deagle, and they are also concerned about the density, the traffic, the infrastructure and the congestion.
All right, thank you. The format for the public hearing tonight will be as follows. The petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public for your comments, and the petitioner will then come up, make any concluding remarks. Is petitioner here to make his presentation before us tonight? Come on up. Let us know what you want to do and what you're requesting.
Actually, you've got to leave it over there for the camera.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We have a hand mic here, if you want to use that.
State your name and address for the record, please.
I can turn it off. I've given them handouts. Good evening. Chris Cusno, representing the applicant from Diverse Real Estate LLC. I am here before you to propose the rezoning of the roughly 343 acres from its existing R1 designation to proposed R1B. The property is bounded by 25 Mile Road to the south, 26 Mile Road to the north, and Shaner Road to the west. The 2017 draft master plan does identify properties located in Sections 1 and 2 as those that could be developed at a density of 3.0 units per acre, which is consistent to our proposed rezoning of the property to R1B. Existing units surrounding the property consist of several meets and bounds residential parcels, as well as existing subdivisions to the south that is also developed and zoned as R1B. The proposed rezoning of the property is consistent to the township master plan and is compatible with existing adjacent properties, and therefore request your support for this rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winn, before we go to the floor, I'd like to get your input and comments for the record.
Mr. Chairman, did the applicant want to discuss his plan while we're at it? Because it's too, you have a companion application. You might as well make your full presentation. That's what's...
I thought that's all you wanted to do, but I'm sure if you'd like to discuss...
I didn't know if it was going to be separated and/or how you want to handle it.
Well, we might as well, while you're here. Let's hear what you'd like to do with the plan also.
Sure. So, our proposed Silver Creek development is a mixed-use PUD development that does contain 343 acres with 594 proposed units at a density of 1.7 units per acre. The property does contain several natural features and man-made features that do traverse the property. Predominantly is the middle branch of the Clinton River that starts just north of the 25 Mile Road and runs in a northeasterly direction. Also along, parallel to that, is an ITC easement corridor that also runs in a northeasterly direction, and there is also a underground gas easement that bisects the property in an east-west direction that's roughly halfway between 25 and 26 Mile Road. The intent of this project is to develop as separate developments or enclaves, and the reason for this is to provide a mixed use of different product styles intended to service a wide range of consumers. If you refer to the drawing that was handed out, these separate enclaves are 65-foot-wide units that are predominantly the units just north of 25 Mile Road shaded in the yellow; 80-foot-wide units that are located just north of 25 Mile Road, just east of Shaner Road, and just south of 26 Mile Road, and those are noted as the lighter green. There's 100-foot-wide units that are shown in the darker green that are located more or less central to the project. We're also proposing 136 duplex units that are shown in orange just south of 26 Mile The property north of the middle branch of the Clinton River is going to be serviced by a boulevard or collector road that connects from Shaner Road and heads northeast to 26 Mile Road. And the reason for this collector road was to be able to access each of these individual enclaves so that you can identify them and market those as separate, more or less, developments. This boulevard road will also contain a 30-foot-wide landscape easement that will contain a four-foot-high berm and will be landscaped to provide additional screening for those units that do back up to the boulevard road. In speaking with Mr. Winn in review of his letter, he has brought up a few concerns that...
Okay, before we, pardon my interruption, before we go on with what Mr. Winn said, if you could conclude your presentation, not on his remarks, I'll have him speak after you're finished.
Okay. So, I believe that pretty much concludes my...
That's it?
...inumbil for any questions.
Now, Mr. Winn. Well, first of all, I'd like to say one thing. I wish we had had something to put on this easel over here, because I don't believe all the residents have seen this, because residents had to come and ask for my plan prior to the meeting. And something of this size and scope, I would think we have, oh, we do have something, but I would think...
That's mine.
That's yours. Okay, I would think that you would have brought something a little more like this for us, to see, everybody to see.
So...
Oh, there it is. A little better late than never.
So...
Okay. Here, if you're going to take the mic, if you're going to go over there and speak.
So, again...
We'll put it on the screen up here.
It'll be on the screen.
Over there.
So, again, to summarize, these are the 65-foot-wide units located on the north side of 25 Mile Road. The 80-foot units are noted in the lighter green shading that are located adjacent to it on 25 Mile Road. We've got a separate component of the 80-foot-wide lots east of Shaner Road, and then another just south of 26 Mile Road. Our 100-foot-wide units are located central and are located in the darker green, as well as the proposed duplex units located just south of 26 Mile Road.
Okay. All right, Mr. Winn, we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I have some, let me get my notes here. I have three major concerns with the project as a whole, kind of linking the rezoning and the plan together, because that's really what you're being asked to do tonight. And the concerns rest in the areas of alignment with the R1B standards and the kind of comparison with the plan, the sensitivity of the plan to the surrounding area and the use of the open space. So, let's start with the R1B. They're asking for R1B zoning, which would mean a base lot of 90 feet wide, 160 feet deep, 14,400 square feet of area. So, that's the basic R1B standard. There's only 136 lots that meet that requirement. Those are the 100 by 150s. The rest are far less than that. And, you know, that, to me, if you're asking for R1B, there should be some reasonable alignment between the zoning and the development plan, recognizing that a PUD offers some flexibility. The second concern is, I guess, context, and we've heard this discussion a lot when we were talking to people at the counter, and that is the mixture of the different uses and where they sit on the site. I think one of the strengths of this proposal is it has some diverse mixture of units. The problem is, I don't think they're appropriately located. Take, for example, the 65-foot-wide lots. South side of 25 Mile Road, you have Preston Pines, Deagle Farms, Wildwood Point subdivision. They're all R1B developments, would meet the standard that I referred to. Then you jump across the street, and you have 65-foot lots that back up to the road. Now, backlotting development to a major road's not the most desirable feature. It's not uncommon, but I think, you know, you make that transition. It's very abrupt, and there's not a logical, there's not some softness there. I think it has a negative impact on the people that live to the south. So, I think the transition of units could be improved. I think one of the biggest issues I have is open space and the design of the open space. So, I spent a little time coloring this map up, and you can see the dark blue, the middle branch of the Clinton River, which runs north to the, from northeast to the southwest. The blue shaded area is floodplain, so that's the area you can't use. Whether this is R1B or multiple family, that land is effectively not usable because of its, the floodplain. So, you know, giving us that as open space without anything else of meaningful nature, I think, is a little disingenuous. So, then the areas that are shaded in light green, which are contiguous to the dark blue, are what I call the extra open space areas. It's residual land that really backs up to some of the lots, that really has little, I think, recreation or open space value. And the dark green shaded lots are the lots that back up to the open space, and there are only 126 of those in the development. Which leads me to the question, who benefits from the result of that open space? Clearly, only a few of the homes benefit, and I don't think any, the township as a whole receives any benefit from that whatsoever. I'm also concerned that if you put these little, these lots back up to the open space, that people have a tendency to, over time, extend their patios into those areas, a garden, a swing set, and what was planned as common open space is now an extension of somebody's backyard if it's designed this way. So, I just don't see that as being a real desirable feature. So, you have, then if you look at, they refer to that, the collector road, which I think is an appropriate concept, and the boulevard's a nice feature, but as you're traveling south in this project from 26 Mile Road, the easterly entrance, you go south on that collector road, and you see those lots that are shaded yellow. Those homes are front-to-front across the major road. When you get about a quarter mile south, the orange lots are backing up to the road. So, imagine coming into development, seeing the front of homes, and then halfway through it, you're looking at the back of homes. So, you know, I think that concept has some merit somewhere. I'm just not sure, in the middle of the development, it really works that well. So, I think, you know, this project has, the plan needs a lot of work to align itself with the R1B better, provide more sensitivity to the residential developments that are in the neighborhood, and provide a meaningful open space plan that provides open space opportunities for the residents of this development, but perhaps the residents of the township as a whole. I just don't see those factors being together in a meaningful way. And until we see that, since these two plans, the plan and the rezoning are linked together, I think to take action on it tonight would be premature, and I would recommend postponement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cusno, can you please come up again to the mic?
I have some questions about the plan. I know you're asking for R1B. Why, can this project be developed as R1?
Not, not in its presented form.
Not like this, but can it be developed as R1?
Not feasibly, no.
Can it be developed as R1A?
Not feasibly, no.
Feasibly to who? Well, hold on. We'll get to public comment in a minute. Why not? Feasibility to who?
Well, I think our proposed R1B is in line with the proposed, with the existing master plan for the project, and I believe it's consistent with the guidelines and the vision that the township had for these properties.
Okay, that was not an answer. Yeah, Mr. Winn?
The reference to the master plan, we have a master plan that exists right now that's being updated. The plan Mr. Cusno is referring to is a draft plan. There's no reference to it in our review, because frankly, I'm not able to do that because it's not an official document yet. So, I think any reference to the future plan is not appropriate at this point, Mr. Chairman.
I would agree with you. Mr. Cusno, let me just, between me and you for a moment, okay? This is not really an R1, you're asking for R1B, but this is not really an R1B plan, is it?
I believe it falls under the guidelines as far as a density use of an R1B that's a general three units per acre, and this qualifying as that density. I do believe that it is.
Maybe in a macro form, but since you want to call it R1B, you have 594 lots. 458 of those are not R1B status. So, you have 80-foot lots, which are not the 90-foot R1B. You have 65-foot lots, which are a third of what an R1B would be. Then you have duplexes, which are R2, not R1B. 77% of this plan is not R1B. So, I don't know how you can stand here and tell me that's an R1B plan when you look at the proposal and it's not. You, on your narrative you gave us, you had some points to justify the special land use, and one of them was point number six. And it said, "The proposed use offers a service for the public convenience at the proposed location." And your response was, "This development will leave approximately 70 acres of woods and open area along the middle branch of the Clinton River for residents to view." We like usable open space, and, you know, as Mr. Winn said, you could not develop the river, you could not develop the floodplain, you could not develop any wetlands or floodplains that are there. So, what are we getting? If, the PUD is a give-and-take. We may give you a little higher density than typical, in exchange, you give us something back. You're asking for a higher density, and as Mr. Winn pointed out, there's not a lot of open space. What are we getting back on our end?
So, with this, we would go back and certainly entertain the comments from this, and if it is in the interest of the Planning Commission to provide integration of these open spaces, look at a better usable way to provide open space to these communities, we'd be willing to go back and take a look at that.
Would you be willing to go back and come forth with a true R1B for the whole property? Not segments? Because what, I think what you're doing is you're taking the middle section and making those a little larger to balance out where you've got the 65-foot lots by 25 and Shaner. You're taking an average. I would personally, I would rather see R1, if you want R1B, let's do the whole thing as R1B, not pick and choose where it's going to go and then cluster more southwest, maybe cluster some housing on the northwest corner, and let's come back with a plan that really meets what you want and not play around with the numbers. That's just me speaking.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow?
Yeah, I was going to, Mr. Wozniak, go ahead.
Yeah. To the applicant, have you had any meetings with any of the residents?
I have not regarding this plan specifically. I've been part of the conversations and the discussions regarding the SAD, which I realize is a separate issue, but there's been a fair amount of those residents that have attended those meetings. So, I've not met with them specifically regarding this proposal.
Historically, one of the things we've recommended, because we can't require it, and Mr. Winn can back this up, is that on projects of this size, this nature, where there's a disparate viewpoint between the resident and the developer, we suggest meeting with residents until you come to a happy conclusion. I'm suggesting that that be done.
Hold on.
Just hang on. Everybody gets their chance.
They're all going to speak.
It's my turn.
Everybody wait, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
Thank you. So, I would say historically, we're backed by the information that you could provide us, that you've talked to these people, and they're kind of happy with what's going in their backyard. I know if I had a density like this with 65 footers in my backyard, I wouldn't be too happy. And I think our chairman here addresses a lot of other points, and I think Mr. Winn did, too. And I think before you go forward, you ought to address those, and I think you ought to address them with the neighbors. Thank you.
I think it's clear you haven't talked to many people, if any, because we've got a lot of people here who oppose it. Any other commissioners have any questions for the petitioner?
I do.
Go ahead, Mrs. Moore.
And I noticed what we just recently received, the update from Fausel Conner Civil Engineer Team, that the final PUD will differ from the preliminary PUD, that the number of apartment units has increased from 162 to 192 units. The number of single-family?
Stolen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Sorry. I'm in the wrong development, sorry. I have to concur with my fellow commissioners. I don't believe that this sizable project and the diversity that you're trying to propose with the different zoning requests within the PUD fits the location. I think it's negatively impacting the surrounding neighborhoods and property values. I don't feel at this time that that is the best use of this property, and I will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, okay, you may be seated temporarily. I'm sure we'll have you back up. Before I open to the public, I want to make a few comments. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board Evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making their final decision on the rezoning. Anyone in the audience wishes to speak can come up for or against, can speak, come on up, sign over here where the microphone is, and then state your name and address for the record. Who would like to come up first?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
Would you review the rules of the game while people are speaking? No other interruptions? Everybody gets to talk?
Oh, yeah. Well, what I'm going to recommend is, because we have a full house, we all try to be respectful. Let's not have any applause from the audience, because that tends to slow things down. Everyone will get a chance to speak. I'm sure a lot of it, I'm sure we know where you're going to go with it, but let's, one at a time, come up, state what you want to say, and then we'll be respectful for everyone else, okay? Thank you.
My name is Hannah Truwinski. I reside at Preston Pines. I also represent the Homeowners Association. I'm the president at Preston Pines, and I'm a Realtor. So, I'm three people today to speak. First of all, about the subdivision and association and homeowners in Preston Pines. We're very proud how the subdivision looks. We're trying to keep up. They are nice lots. They are nice people, and traffic, as it is right now, is unbearable. It took me on Saturday 15 minutes to go from Jewel Road to Shaner to get into subdivision. Lights change, I don't know, six, seven times. That's what we have right now. On the top of it, what's the biggest problem? When people see, when it's rush hour, they see there is a long line of cars, they cut through our subdivision to go south on Shaner. You can imagine coming out from that proposed thing, getting the traffic on 25, and Shaner, for that matter. We have school buses that they add to it in specific times, and this plan, as a Realtor, I see, was maximized totally for splitting to the lots. This is no concern for the homeowners, even for that area, that they'll have some kind of visibility or enjoyment of the backyards, because everything is so jammed. As I understood, because was updated the zoning plan, that the R1B is one-family residential with low density and moderate. I don't call 65 by 120 moderate, and then duplexes are definitely not residential. They will come under R2. So, it's a conflict in here, first of all. Type of homes, we didn't even hear, those 65 by 120, how they will look. As I understand, they will be vinyl-sided. Maybe I'm wrong, but beside the point how they look, putting a 3-4-foot berm does not cover anything. So, for the look of it, when you look to the south and see those beautiful homes, and then you look at that jammed houses on the north side, it does not complement the area at all. Traffic is the main concern, but also the values. Somebody may say, "These are new homes, and they will bring up the value because they're new." No, depends what kind of homes you put up there. On the top of it, I heard the comments that the senior citizens are looking for smaller homes on the smaller lots. Wrong. As a Realtor, I tell you, they are not looking for that. They're looking for help. They're staying in a bigger home. They hire the landscaping company, and they maintain their properties. When they get to the point they can't live on their own, then they look into not condominium. They go to retirement home, or they go to nursing home, or they move with the family. So, by cutting those cookie cutters on the 25 mile north of it, it does not make any sense. My, another concern is about the wildlife. What happened on 24 mile north side between Shaner and Hayes is disgrace. We have coyotes, we have other wildlife coming to our lots. They are small children, they are small pets that being attacked, and we have to guard it. When the place GM on 12 and Mount was developed, requirement from the city was that the wildlife would be moved away. So, they were catching the deer and other wild animals and moved them to other areas. I don't know if they went to Stony Creek or somewhere else, but definitely they were moved out. There are still few that somehow survived. There are still few that somehow survived, but not what it was. But what was done on twenty-four mile, there will be similar thing in this area, because there's a lot of wood area there, and that's where they live. Six hundred properties, almost, five ninety-four or whatever. On the average, you will have two cars per household. They have four cars when they have teenagers, but let's say two. Almost twelve hundred of those cars will be coming on Shainer or on twenty-five mile. On the top of it, the way it's put it, how you exit to twenty-five mile is even closer than our exit. I can't turn west from Preston Pines, because how traffic crosses and there's no stop. So adding those extra cars, that will be ridiculous. So we'll have to be somewhere else exit, even if those smaller lots won't survive, and we'll have some more reasonable plan. But we can't jam those exits, and especially that is closer to the lights, again, that will add that we won't be able to move around. And I hope that all of you live in Shelby Township. And if not, I hope wherever you live, that you enjoy your backyards, and that you are vowed that we won't have this, to look at it. And I mainly built the home eight years ago because was R-1, ninety-by-one-fifty, the minimum lot size. And now I'm looking at my home that will lose the value, because this development will have so many that they are not fitting in that zoning. Even if you rezone to R-1B, this is still way too much for that zoning purpose. And that was just updated in February this year. So there's nothing new, I know you know all of it, but we need to speak as we are coming here, how unhappy we were when we look at it and notice how really maximized to the tooth, how these lots were divided. Because whatever is left is really useless. It's wetland. So maybe you can look at it, but really not walk on it or enjoy it, and I don't think you can put the boat and move around in here. So this is useless part of land. Thank you, and I hope that will not pass.
Thank you, and yet we all do live in Shelby Township.
We can work with something that that area can be moved inside, so it's not so visible, because all of the subdivisions around, they don't have these kind of homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward and speak? Come on down. Come on down, sir. I'll get you next. Name and address, please.
Robert Colgeman, 14510, Twenty-Five Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. I'm right on the road that's gonna get all the traffic. So, but some things that we haven't talked about is a traffic that's gonna go up and down. My recommendation is, we just leave it R-1. What wasn't stated is, that's thirty thousand square foot lots. They want to go to fourteen thousand square lots. That's double, double. Just develop it the way it was when he bought it. It's called land speculation. He bought it, he says, "I can build R-1, now we want to make special rules, put a PUD, that's it." He talked about the master plan, that's only proposed, it's not finalized, but it sure looks like it was written to meet that. Just throwing that out there. We're talking about the sewer pipe on Twenty-Five Mile Road that we all have to pay for. Could go with smaller pipe, lot less money, if it was half the houses. But hey, let's double the houses and charge the people who live on Twenty-Five Mile Road for the pipe. Great idea. So not to mention how it's gonna double the houses and tax the resources of Shelby Township. Fire Department, Police Department, schools, they're not gonna keep up with it. Stick with the R-1, thirty thousand square foot lots, which match our houses, the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. And name and address, please, yeah?
Stephen Cosley, 14881 Chatham Street. My house backs up to Twenty-Five Mile Road. Number one, I'd like to thank a few of you for actually standing up. Doug, I think Markell, standing up against this, and at least have some concerns for it. I am for being R-1.
Can you speak into the mics, so we all can hear you better?
I am for being R-1.
Address the chair, that way, there we go.
I am for being R-1. Some of the other issues brought up, like the traffic, and it just, when you have three hundred, four hundred acres, I think it should complement the surrounding area. That does not complement the surround. Do you want that in your backyard?
Okay, address the chair, sir, please.
Put it in your backyard, not ours. At least, at least, you know, you had brought up, get the neighbors involved, get the people involved. You know, at least let us have a say in what's going in our backyard. Again, the traffic, I can't picture sixty-five-foot lots backing up to Twenty-Five Mile Road. You know, a lot of people, I'm down the road a little bit, but Preston Pines, they have to look at this every day. I just, I am opposed to it, and I think it should be R-1. It would complement the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Come on down, ma'am. Don't be shy, everyone gets a chance to speak.
My name is Sarah Deagle. I reside at 14499 Twenty-Five Mile Road, Shelby Township. I also own Deagle's Greenhouse, the business on Twenty-Five Mile, which we will be affected by all of this. I want to start by saying that most people, when they move out to Shelby, they come for the larger lot sizes. I mean, I am from Sterling Heights, I had a small lot growing up. I came out this way, and we love the area. I mean, I was out farther until we bought the business, but the bigger lot sizes, the families want larger. Who wants their kids to go outside and play? I'm one of those families. Let the kids go outside. If they don't have a yard to play on, they need some place to burn off some energy, and if you don't have a large lot, what are your kids gonna do? Also, with the river being in that area, in the current master plan that is in effect right now, it states that there was a recommendation that in Section One, there should be a park, that the township should have bought property for a park. What would be better than a park by a river? I would like, you know, who wouldn't want to take their kid near a river? Go fishing. Have something like that in that area to take your kids and actually enjoy the river. If, I mean, if we're gonna see development, it would still be nice to see a park where people can take all the nature that's already there, that can't be changed, and enjoy it. I know what kid doesn't like, going down and playing in a river and fishing and, you know, enjoying nature. And yes, there's Stony Creek, but you know, there's other things in this area that we could actually see, and I think that that would be a benefit to the township. You know, your families would really appreciate it. I know myself, and I've talked to all of our friends, our friends' kids, they would love it. Who wouldn't like that? I mean, who wouldn't enjoy spending time, quality time with their kids too, you know? Or like McComb, they have that area where there's baseball stadiums and, or baseball fields, and you know, bigger park like that. It would be nice to see something in this section that would accommodate that. And it does say then the current master plan, that that would have been a great thing for them to do. So I would still like to see something in this area along those lines, and I think with having the river there, what would be better than incorporating all of that in that area? Most people have talked about the traffic, yes, the traffic is very, very horrendous right now. And with that many more houses, it's just gonna get that much more. I think the roads need to be addressed prior to a development, even, obviously, I would like to see it stay the R-1 like it's zoned right now, and I would like to, you know, but the traffic still needs to be addressed, because my kids, they go to a school, and there's a traffic light, but if that traffic light is not working on Twenty-Six Mile, guess what? They have to call the police department for the police to come direct traffic, just for the parents and the school buses to exit the school. So that is a major issue, and if you're putting that many more, what's gonna happen? We're gonna still have those issues as well. School buses on the roads, they are so, the traffic is so bad, people do not stop for school buses, which is a major, major problem, especially on a major road, what is fifty miles an hour, which really would, should be addressed, and we should look at getting that reduced, I think, because that is a very fast road for that amount of traffic. There are so many accidents already. There was one last, I believe, the other day on Twenty-Six Mile, where traffic had to be rerouted as well. That's a major concern. I've, many times, another person had mentioned how long it takes to get from Jewel to Shainer. Yeah, I've been stuck in it, and guess what? How many accidents have been there because people, traffic stopped, oh no, guess what? There's rear-ending. There's so many accidents already on these roads. And I think the roads really need to be addressed, and the infrastructure of the roads need to be addressed before any development gets in there, because the roads can't handle what it's at right now, let alone what you're gonna add into the area. So I think these are different things that should be addressed prior to any development, but I do want to see larger lot sizes. I, you know, want to see what most people come to Shelby for, and that's the larger lot sizes. I would like to see, you know, it developed with a park and property, so people can enjoy and actually say they're proud to live in Shelby Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turnick, just for a second.
Go ahead, Mr. Wozniak.
Mr. Wynn, we have on our CIP program, the widening of Shainer up to Twenty-Six.
Yes.
From what it is now to Three and Five Lane?
Yes.
Okay, so Shainer is gonna be widened, if nobody knew that. Now, what about Twenty-Six Mile?
We don't have any, I've not had any discussions with the county about widening Twenty-Six yet.
Okay, so that's about all we got right now on road widening, so.
And I think that widening is proposed to be started by year 2027.
It's a long way out.
So, yeah, that's a long time.
It's a while out.
Don't worry.
There's no, there's really, there's really no date yet.
That's what was on the plan, 2027. No date, but I found that very interesting.
Yeah.
It's a placeholder, is really what it is.
It's on the books.
Anyone else like to come down? Go ahead, sir, come on down. Hi.
My name is Charles Gibbs. I live at 13756 Jack Pine Lane, Shelby Township. I want to thank the members of the board that have come out and supported some of our concerns. I've lived in Shelby Township since 1980. Main reason I moved out here was because of lot sizes, because of the value of the homes. I've seen the development, I'm glad to see that Shelby Township has, for the most part, maintained the lot sizes and maintained the quality of the homes, and I just see this as something that flies in the face of that whole, the whole idea of Shelby Township maintaining those, the quality of the homes that are existing right now. I think it's a huge mistake to try to place these small lots across from homes that have the lot sizes that fulfill the requirements of the zoning as it stands right now. I would like to see this plan reworked. I think that all of us can agree that that property was gonna be developed at one point or another anyway, but that it matches what is currently out in Shelby Township right now, and what a lot of us have moved out there and expect to be in Shelby Township. Thank you.
You can come to the podium first, and then you can sign in afterward, might speed things up a little bit.
My name is Michelle Olson. My address is 53953 Trent River, part of Wildwood Sub. And I just wanted to come up and formally confirm what the other folks have said. I agree with everything that they said, and all the concerns, mere mine. I like the point about involving the neighborhood in some of the decision-making around this development, because...
Stand closer to the mic, go ahead.
It is important. There's a lot of concerns about traffic, and schools, and property values, and homes, and it is important to get consensus with the people that you're gonna live around. I also would like to see more green space in Shelby Township, more open space, and when you go rethink this development, which I think you're gonna have to do, it sounds like anyway, to think about more of an open space for the community as part of this. Furthermore, maybe a dog park, or something like that would be nice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on down, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Berry. I live at 54902 Spirea Drive in Shelby Township, Wildwood Point. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the time and opportunity to speak on behalf of this. It's the first, last couple of weeks, first time my wife and I had heard of this development. And briefly, my wife and I and my son, we moved here approximately eighteen years ago for the same reasons many other people have moved here, and that's in regards to the size of the lots, the types of the homes, and what this community has become. The school districts and the family network that's been developed, especially in Wildwood Some things that bother me the most is the fact that, number one, nobody spoke to us. Nobody communicated that there was gonna be something going on in this area. What bothers me even more is there not similar homes to what our community has or our area has? The lots are considerably smaller, as you've mentioned, and bringing in six hundred homes just seems to me to be more like a profit venue for the developer than the care for the community. And I think that's what we really need to look at, is what's important for our community and how we need to address the issues. There's a lot of things that should be done or could be done, but similar properties of what's in that area should only be considered. Pretty much, that's it. I mean, everybody's kind of mentioned traffic's terrible, it takes me about four minutes to make a left out of Wildwood Point sometimes. I'm not against having similar homes or lot sizes that we have in that area, but definitely not something that's gonna be in a compressed area like this, just where somebody can make a lot of money. We have barely recovered the money that we've invested in our homes twenty years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
I'm Rose Goiki, 13152 Twenty-Six Mile Road. I'm speaking on behalf of tonight, my mother-in-law, Gina Goiki, who resides at 13,026 Mile Road. She couldn't be here tonight, I'm going to read her letter to you. She's very concerned about the homes and condos that are being built between Hayes and Shainer, and she's also, on Twenty-Six Mile Road in Washington Township, they're putting a development in just about across the street. So they're going to have, it's somewheres where Utica Schools own the property, and they're going to develop then, it's just about direct, I don't know the exactness, but about across the street there. So in that area, there is going to be tremendous amount of traffic if both parcels, if everything gets developed the way it's looking. She mentions about the traffic, how congested it's going to be, and if there'll be needed extra traffic control, especially with the school buses, nine-one-one systems won't be able to get to where they need to be. And smart buses worried about this. And smart bus, she's worried about the smart bus not being able to drop and pick off the senior citizens in the area. And basically, you know, just how busy and traffic and everything is, is what everybody's been saying. We, the development, there is no rural anymore in Shelby Township. And when she moved here 60-some years ago, there was, that's all it was, but now there's nothing. And that's what everybody says when they come out here, that's what they want to see. But there isn't anymore any country, and that's sad to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want a copy of her letter?
Sure. Do we have that? I'm not sure, but I'll take it.
I don't think, you know what? She sent it to the board.
Oh, well, I'll take it just in case.
The trust is...
Yes, she did, and that's why...
You guys have a copy?
We have one.
The planning commission has...
We have, this one, we have so many of them, but yeah, okay.
No, she, you have that one or not.
I'll keep it. Add it to the pile. Thank you. Who else wants to come down and speak? Come on down. Positively or against, whatever you'd like.
Thank you. My name's Mike Shoy. I live at 14600 25 Mile Road, Shelby Township. I've been on the road 42 years, seen a lot. When I first came here, it was all farm country, and they did a heck of a job, you know, developing these beautiful homes, beautiful area. When I got people that come over, you know, that haven't been in the surrounding areas, says, wow, this place, this gorgeous area, you know? I think if you guys are going to do what you're going to do here, it's going to be a sin, you're going to ruin the area. I mean, it's, to me, it's a travesty, what's going to happen, you know? I think you need to leave at R1 so, you know, the surrounding area could, you know, Shelby Township is an elite township, I feel. It's a beautiful township, you know? But I believe if you're going to do this, you're just going to ruin things. So that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else want to, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Benjamin Aloya, 54439 White Spruce Lane. I just want to make a few comments. One is that I'd ask that the planning commission and the township stand firm on the integrity of the density on the south side. I live in Preston Pines as well, and I would like to see something complimentary to the lot sizes that we have in Preston Pines and in Wildwood. I think the township has done a tremendous job building that 25-mile corridor with the R1 and with the R1B lots. I mean, our lots are 90 by 160 in our subdivision. It's a fantastic subdivision. It gives us a nice area to build the homes. And if you put something there that, with 65-foot wide lots right on 25 Mile Road, it will compromise the integrity of the density that the township has worked hard to build over the years. The fact is, is that I know traffic's a problem. This development, and Mr. Cuzno is a fine developer, I know this development will happen in some fashion, but, and it's difficult to stop progress in today's society, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have to do it in a way which will minimize the impact of the surrounding developments. 26 Mile can handle a better density or more intense density than 25 Mile Road. I'm an attorney, I do work for the Department of Roads, I'm not, I've done every road widening, I've bought land for every road widening in this county since 2004. I know for a fact that this, these roads will not be widened anytime soon. And when it comes, it's going to come from 23 Mile up to 25. And the problem is the federal funding. We just don't get the federal funding, we need the county match through the Act 51 monies. And although Shelby Township is the most aggressive of all the townships in the county of putting forth money to widen their roads because they understand what the residents need, and that's one of the reasons why I live here, it's just, the reality is, it's not going to happen anytime soon. And so we're going to see a heavy impact at that 25-mile light with this development. People are already cutting through from Wildwood through our subdivision to get to Shaner to avoid that light because it backs up to our entrance. So I just ask that the planning commission stand firm on the principles that it's expressed today throughout the proposals. I've been practicing law for a while, I've represented developers, I understand that this is Mr. Cuzno's first offer, and he's trying to maximize what he has there, but there is a compromise here that makes sense to the community and the surrounding residents. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, since you work for the county roads. Is 2027 a reasonable timeframe for Shaner widening, or is it longer?
That means that there is no plan yet.
Okay.
But it is a priority, and I know that there's discussions that it is a priority. But the fact of the matter is, when you don't know where the federal funding is coming, you know, North Avenue, for instance, if you know it's being widened right now, they're constructing it between 21 and Hall Road. I finished that project a year and a half ago, two years ago. We bought out the land. So we know that when we acquire everything, you're still a year out from building. So if it's not on the books yet, 26 Mile is just, there are just some lines and ideas, and so there's just not enough money. They envision it like an M59, but there's not, there isn't enough money to do that. And when it happens, it's going to take a decade probably to do when they start it. So that's just the reality.
Okay, thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rose Miskowski, and I live at 54377 Preston Pines. I've lived there a little over a year, my husband and I. We moved February of last year. We came from a beautiful lot in Washington Township, we backed up to a Springfield lake. Our son, our daughter-in-law, and our granddaughter moved in with us, and we decided that we're going to retire and we're going to move somewhere else, and we decided to buy a really nice home that my son could raise his daughter in and let him buy us out. So we moved there February a year ago. We chose Shelby Township because of the lot sizes. We chose Shelby Township because of the beautiful R1 homes in that area. We chose Shelby Township because of the school system. We wanted our granddaughter to have a great school system and live in a great community. I don't oppose, of course, building and developing that land, but it needs to be consistent with the surrounding area. It needs to be R1, and I just hope that you'll consider that. And I hope my granddaughter gets to grow up in that area that we planned for her.
Maybe by then Shaner will be widened too.
Yeah.
Ma'am, did you sign in? Come on down, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Bill Burrows. I live on 56301 Shaner. And as I'm looking at this for the first time, I see that there's only one entrance and exit on Shaner Road that's going to handle 600 to 1,200 cars? That, I'm glad I spoke after this gentleman because he's already expressed what's going to happen with roads, and we're all aware of that. Anyways, I also just went through quite a fiasco with others here with the water in the sewer. Now, hopefully, this is going to go like that, because there was an initial plan that was, to say the least. So it's evolved, and now we hopefully have it straightened out. And like it was said already, I understand progress is the way it's going to be, and that's fine and dandy, but we all moved here for a reason, and this is the last square mile in Shelby Township to be developed. I hope we all don't sell out on this and try to keep it to the standard that's promoted this township for as long as it's existed. And I'd also like you to consider with all this traffic, everybody's worried about cars and traffic, you know, there's an elementary school right there. So there will be children crossing these roads. It could be quite entertaining, not entertaining, it could be disastrous with results. We all need to look at, typically in this township, schools are placed in the middle of subdivisions over here to access the surrounding children. If you're going to have them cross a five-lane Shaner Road with 1,200, well, I don't know how many we have now, with an additional 1,200 cars or more, I think maybe we ought to look at doing something with the roads before we let all this happen. And of course, like others, let's keep it R1 so that, let's not sell out for the big buck. They'll make enough money with the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kathy Lepiclaw. I live at 56089 Shaner Road. And everything I had written down to say has already been said, but I just want to put it on record that I am against this the way it stands, and we love Shelby, it's beautiful, but that is not a good plan. And I hope that we can work this out and meet with the developer and come up with something. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you're going to address the chair if you speak. You can talk to him after the meeting if you'd like. I'm sure he'd welcome comments. Come on down, ma'am.
Hi, Krista Carl, 54784 Spirea. I live in Wildwood Point. I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to this. I think everybody's covered everything that's been said, or should have been said. I think the major concern is definitely the traffic and the type of housing that is going in there. I think it's a little deceiving to say, I think he mentioned before, that it was comparable to the housing that's around there, and that's just blatantly not true. I mean, you have Wildwood Point, you have Preston Pines, you have Deagle Farms, definitely does not meet up with the standards. So I just wanted to make sure that, I think most of these people here are opposed to this, and some might be afraid to come up and speak.
Don't be afraid.
So I don't know if you have something to sign?
Sign right there, ma'am, if you could.
No, for everybody else, like, that might not speak, saying they're opposed also.
No, this is a public hearing, they have a chance to come on down. I know it's frightening, intimidating, but believe me, don't be intimidated by me or anybody. If you want to speak, you can come on down. But now, does anybody have anything? I think we've got, one second. We've had a good idea of what some of the opposition from the residents is. Does anyone have anything different you'd like to add, ma'am? You can come on down. Anything different? Come on down. Anything new maybe we haven't talked about, but, okay, maybe. Come on down.
Everything that's been said, yes. One other thing...
That's your name and address, please.
Sorry, Amy Zalasko, 13946 Jack Pine, I'm in Preston Pines. You get all those houses, you get all those families, what school are they going to go to? Our schools are full. So they're going to go to Beacon Tree across the street? Then where are those kids going to go? Are they going to be redistricted? Are they going to then go to Christman? And then where are the Christman families going to go that Preston Pines currently goes to? Somewhere farther south? Are they going to build, they have to build a new school? I mean, our schools are completely full, 35 kids in class. So maybe that's one more thing to think about before we add that.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you sign in. Anyone else have anything different, or, come on down, sir.
Scott Kuzinovic, 14550 25 Mile Road. Couple of things, just, when I moved out here 15 years ago, my lot size is 585 by 120, not 65 by a little pin stamp. But for the record, how many people, because I've seen a lot of people want to stand up, can they stand up if they oppose this? For the record, to say, how many people stand up?
No, I think, I think we can just assume safely, I think it would be safe to assume.
Yeah, because I definitely, I don't, I don't want this even to go, just so we get it to that.
I think it's pretty safe everyone here is against it, so, all right, thank you. Unless somebody wants to come up and speak for it, you can do that also, but I think we have a good idea. One second. We have a petition. Speaking to that, I'm glad Mrs. Moore mentioned it. We do, it was handed to me before the meeting from Preston Pines, and they already have 41 signatures of people living there who have opposed it. And that does not count necessarily everybody else who's here that's not from Preston Pines. So like I said, we have a very good cross-section, I think, of opposition to the plan. Come on down, sir.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Frani, I'm Preston Pines resident, was one of the first five houses in, so appreciate, and I won't applaud my homeowners association, but you did an awesome job. I guess the different approach I take with this, and I appreciate you all being here tonight, and I think I've heard some very good, reasonable questions being asked of the developer. What happens next? Because I don't want this to fall into some smoke-filled room and we leave tonight feeling we've got some victory and we're all rallied around, it's got to be R1, we're not going to stop progress. How do I know some little sweetheart deal doesn't get cut somewhere else? And then I wake up to bulldozers in six months and I found out it's all our too. I just don't know the process? Maybe you could educate me on it.
Process, definitely will not be a closed-door room. Mr. Winn, you want to update what we have?
Sure, so the process is, the planning commission makes recommendations to the township board, which are the elected officials, and, you know, the final decision would be made by the township board. If for some reason this development is postponed tonight, we will re-notify, we will re-notify everybody.
The board decision, is that also a public forum?
No, it's a public meeting, but there's no notices when it goes to the board. But our policy at the planning commission has been, we would let people know again that, you know, this is back, and anybody that wants to sign, who's signed, or we, I think the simplest thing, we just re-notify everybody. That way, we don't, we don't miss anybody.
Okay.
See, we just recommend yes, no, or postpone it, and then the board, Mr. Wozniak and his fellow elected officials will make a decision. But we, off of our recommendation, whether they agree with it or not, that's up to them.
And there's an opportunity at the board meeting for public comment, just there wouldn't be a notice. But we would let you know when that would be.
Okay. Because I felt this time, and I have been through it before, I just saw a sign out in the weeds, and I got my curiosity, and thank God for Facebook.
See, that's what's disappointing. It's not rocket science to know that when you put something up, especially of this size and scope and this important of an area, that you should talk to the people in the area that might be affected by it. This is one of the last, this and the property to the east is one of the last big parcels to develop. It's a big project. It's an important project to the residents, and the fact that there was no communication or very little communication is just astounding. It's quite disappointing, actually.
And I know, I'm addressing you, but I'll just offer it to anybody who's for this plan. If you'd like to drive with my 16-year-old son and try to pull out onto Shaner and 25 Mile Road, turn rush hour, have at it, and if that doesn't scare the bejesus out of you, I'll throw my 14-year-old at it, who just got her permit. And I've got two more to raise like that, and I don't want them hurt, I don't want any of their friends hurt. I mean, this is, this is, this could be a life and death situation, and I just would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Wozniak.
Quick comment on the notice. If you did not receive a notice concerning this and you only heard it from a neighbor, please get on our list so that you're going to be on the mailing, if there's any more mailing, or when we have a township board meeting for the vote, if you wish to express your concerns. Mr. Winn knows this, I always get on him because I would rather have him overnotice than undernotice. So if you're not on our list, make sure you get on it. Thank you.
So the way we could do this, Mr. Chairman, is at the end of the meeting, anybody who hasn't spoken, who maybe didn't get a notice, take that sheet of paper, I'll give you another sheet of paper, just take it out and leave it, leave it at one of the counters out there or in the lobby, and we'll add those to the list of anybody that wants to be notified in the future.
Ma'am, did you, come on forward. I'll get you one second, sir.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Dubra Kita, 53336 Villa Circle. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, appreciate your work, your concern. Glad to know you're all from Shelby. I've been a resident for over 30 years, and I am concerned that, let me start. I'm a realtor as well, and the thought of not being concerned about the people you impact, relationship-wise as a business, I think is very short-sighted on our developer. Because if he's a successful developer, I'm sure he has other communities to develop. And if you're not willing to work well with the one that you have in front of you, I don't imagine other people, other communities are going to be looking to do business with you. I think it's very short-sighted. School systems, it goes along with our trees. We're known for having a wonderful school system. I think the lady that just spoke and mentioned, that's a concern. That's huge. Our trees. I belong to a website, it's a neighborhood website called Next Door, and a woman spoke about seeing beautiful trees just taken down and being sold apparently to some mill with just the shame of that. It was very emotional for her, very upsetting. We see a lot going within Shelby Township. I live off of 24... I live off of 24-Mile in a subdivision, and we had that problem a few years back, where all our trees were tied with yellow ribbons and stuff like that, and we had to fight for them. And there was no fight for these trees. I know that sounds silly perhaps, but you know what? That's what we're about. I'm standing here looking at a sign with a tree on it. It matters. I'd like to say I'm opposed to this. I don't think it's in anybody's good interest, except perhaps the developer, and my biggest question is, why? Why? Why do it that way? Why? You could do so much, and you can be known, you could be a hero in this story. You could have a park. You could be thinking of the people that live here, and they're going to want to live in your home. They're going to fight to live in your home. They're going to pay more to live in your home, because you have so many, and they're going to want it, so they're willing to pay more. Why not be the hero? Why? There's no reason, there's none whatsoever, except greed. Greed. I'd like to say I agree with the traffic issues. I have friends that live right on Shaner Road. It's a shame. They have a hard time getting out of their own driveway in the morning. I'd like to say R1 is important. Please don't accept anything less than R1. Maintaining lot size, it's key. Love the idea of a park. I thank you again.
All right, thank you. Come on down, sir. Mrs. Kita, did you sign in?
Oh, no.
Okay, sorry.
Hi, Jim McBride, 54263 Black Cherry Lane, Preston Pines. Definitely opposed to this. When you look at the sixty-five by one-twenty lot, it is clearly not compatible at all. In fact, it's not compatible at all with the development that's being proposed. If you look a square mile this way, and a square mile this way, and a square mile this way, what do you have? You have ninety by one-thirty, one-sixty lots. What Shelby is known for, and I've lived here twenty-five years, large lots, and guess what you got on your plaque there? You have trees. So, I think people have been talking about trees, and the fact that they're being cut down, and unfortunately, some of the developers get a little over-aggressive and will cut down what was supposed to not be cut down. And then apparently, the reprimand is, oh, we got to put some other trees back in. Possibly what you could consider is maybe putting a value on those trees. Maybe a couple thousand dollars on each tree. You cut it down, guess what? It's going to cost you. So, maybe put a little teeth into the enforcement. That might, that might help a little bit. I know we only got about a square mile left. And I agree with every thing that's been said, and at this point, I oppose it. And one other thing I'd like to add is the notification. I live in Preston Pines, and I only live about a quarter of a mile off of 25-Mile Road, and I never got a notification. Was I supposed to get a notification?
It's three hundred feet.
Ah, didn't make it. Okay.
What I recommend, though, you sign some information with Mr. Nguyen to get.
Oh, I will.
This'll come up again.
Yeah, the way I found out was a text that was forwarded to my daughter, that was forwarded to me, and the text came from Washington Township. That's how I found out about it, about a week and a half ago, so. So, I think notification is very important, and particularly maybe something of this scope, maybe the three hundred feet could be kind of widened a little bit, to maybe involve more, more communities. So, that's it, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody have anything different they'd like to add than what we've heard tonight? Because we've got a very good cross-section of opposition. Hearing none more? No more, I'll bring it back up to the board. Mr. Cuzno, can you come on up?
You've heard the comments from the nineteen residents who spoke. They've talked about traffic, property values, the open space, the lot sizes, the roads, it's a whole laundry list of issues comparable properties with what's in the area. Want to comment on any of those?
So, there's a lot to digest, and I am certainly not opposed to sitting down with residents and having a discussion based on some of these responses. Certainly, I'm never opposed to meeting with groups even in advance of submittals, and to be honest, I was unaware of really the opposition, particularly to the residents to this all. So, having, if I would have known that, certainly would have not have been opposed to have met with residents to flush these, these issues out. So, certainly I am in support of meeting with residents and hashing these issues out, particularly as it relates to density, having a conversation with traffic. Traffic studies typically, at this stage, aren't required until final. We go through a series of local approvals, and we go out for the other agencies, and that's when the road commission gets involved in that. So, right now, we haven't developed any of those studies, and we'll be providing those at the required time. But certainly, I think the next step is, and sitting down and having that discussion with residents, and revising a plan based on those conversations.
When I saw this, I didn't think of this as your first plan to negotiate further. I think when we talk about a property of this size, we should come up with a plan that really it meets with what the nature of the area is, fills in with a compatible issue that the residents brought up. This does not, and I can tell you, I will not support this plan unless we come back, you come up with something closer to an R1B, not for certain sections, not for the middle section, but for the property in general. If you, I would, you know, you have to prove the case to me. I'm not sold on it, anything other than what it is now. However, given I understand that the R1 zoning classification is twenty years old, maybe it's antiquated, maybe it's not, but you haven't made a case, and to say it's not feasible, it's not economically feasible to develop it, I never like hearing those words, because there has to be some other kind of reason why we should grant you a rezoning. So, I would, personally, I would concur with Mr. Nguyen to postpone, especially since we don't have Mr. Moffett and Mrs. Casali here with us. I'd like to hear their input and their thoughts on what they, how they feel about this property as well.
Mr. Nguyen, do you, any other commissioners have any other follow-up questions for Mr. Cuzno? Mr. Dallo, go ahead.
Chairman, you know, for all of the matter for the large property like that, even with the R1, you'd be looking at around three hundred lots plus, and that is not going to solve the concern of people that we have in here about traffic. And the developer, for sure, he won't be able to do anything about the traffic fact, and that's there, whether we like it, none of us like it, but it's there. And it's not only on Shaner, on 25-Mile, on 26-Mile, for the sake of development, everywhere we drive, there is traffic. And we got to think about, even if we go to R1, it's around three hundred lots, how are we going to deal with that? There is, some people mentioned about schools, some people, traffic, we all mentioned about traffic all day, but that's neither here or there, we can't do nothing about it. There's not enough funds, as the attorney mentioned, to widen every road that we need to widen. But these are the facts that we have to face, and if he meet with the resident, they all have to look at that fact, that we still looking close to three hundred-plus lots that we need to deal with in the area, and how are we going to deal with that? Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Cuzno?
I move to close, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Nguyen, do you have any final comments?
No.
Okay. The planning commission's decision for the proposed use must be based on the following: the practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. We may, the planning commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table to evaluate the information we've received this evening. A motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wozniak.
I move to postpone the preliminary PUD application for Silver Creek condominiums to give the applicant an opportunity to address all the open space and transitional design issues identified by the planning and zoning department, and to also meet with residents to hear their concerns, to see what type of resolution they can come to.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wozniak, supported by Mr. Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Mrs. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And chairman votes yes. Motion to postpone carries. Thank you. Mr. Cuzno, you do have all that written down, all those concerns that were brought up, correct?
I do, yes.
Okay.
For, for clarification, is there a motion made also on the rezoning, or is that?
That is the rezoning to postpone.
I think, I think the motion should encompass both applications. Mr. Wozniak, was that your intention?
Right.
Yes.
That was my understanding, yeah.
You're already in a PUD.
Thank you.
One's postponed, we can't really do anything with the other, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all the residents who came out to speak and those who didn't speak, and if you had, want to be included on any further notices about this, please get in touch with Mr. Nguyen, because we do want your input. We'll pause for a second while they're leaving.
They're doing both simultaneous.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Effectively, five-minute break.
Let's take a five-minute break.
No, it was, what was in my packet. Oh, I think that he included all of them together. Didn't you include all of the letters that we received tonight? He's kind of wrong.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order after our five-minute break. We're going to move on on our agenda. Next is moving on to site plan number seventeen dash seventeen for New Tech Auto Sales Repair at 5515 Auburn Road. Nguyen? I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
All right, what we have here is an expanded use of an existing property. The applicant's looking to add, I'm sorry, the applicant's looking to add the additional use of resale for vehicles on the site, and what we ask them to do is basically make as many improvements as we can. Since it's an older existing site, there's only so much that can be reasonably and feasibly done. The bigger issues that we have, we're improving the landscaping and the access through the site, closing off the additional entrances, clarifying some of the odd notes on there, and one of the bigger things was to ask the health department for verification that they could store vehicles on the, over the septic field. Other than that, it's really the best that we can get for this type of site.
Sir, you're the additioner, go ahead.
Chester Steppen, architect for the project, and it's a facility that is now used to repair vehicles, but in order to increase his business, he would like to add a used car facility on that same site. In order to do that, we are proposing to close off one of the drives to Auburn to provide more vehicle parking, and we are adding landscaping, because there's residents off Parkdale. We're proposing a white, six-foot-high vinyl fence that would additionally screen this facility to the adjacent residents up to the-
13.37, specifically, or specifically Section 13.37, which is part of the special land use section in Article 13 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence on this one?
Uh, no. You know what? I'm just making sure that we...
I don't believe we did. I didn't get any.
I think we did in the... It's in the newer, sorry. Excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
We did receive a piece of correspondence, and this is from Paragon Ready Mix, Ken Niesel, president. He's got some disregards to the proposed mixed-use development. And he just basically requested the planning and zoning department incorporate extensive buffers, berm, trees, and landscape and setbacks along the southern property line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wynn, we'll go to you for your comments first on this one.
Sure. This is an adjustment to a previously approved PUD. Back in 2006, there was a plan for this property, and the property that joins to the east, that kind of wraps around Corey Lake. You may recall that was a fairly aggressive plan in terms of the number of units and density. As you'll, as will be pointed out when Mr. Epping begins his presentation, this is, this plan has been reduced in scope by a significant margin. First of all, they phased it, so this is basically part of the Auburn Road frontage and then the Hickson Avenue frontage to the north on the west side of the lake. And what's been changed is you have a substantial quantity now of single-family. I think the previous plan only had a little single-family on the, on the east side of the lake, and now you have a substantial amount of single-family on the west side of the lake. So you have a much better transition to the, to the neighborhood, to the west off of Hickson. There are some, you know, the, you see our review, there's some site plan details that still have to be attended to. None of them changed the design of the site. Some are internal building setback issues, which we can approve as part of the PUD. You know, looking at the broader picture of trying to redevelop this area, this isn't a greenfield site like we dealt with in the northeast corner in Section 1. This is a previously developed site that has some blighted characteristics, and I think this is a huge improvement. And I, our department offers a strong recommendation for favorable consideration, subject to modification of the plan, obviously, to make those adjustments.
Okay. We're going to go to the public hearing. The format for the public hearing will be as follows.
Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wynn. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Epping. Yeah, come on up. Sorry.
No, I appreciate it. I'll be brief. Again, thank you for your time. My name is Jim Epping. I'm a land planner tonight, representing Tricia Bossio in Auburn Hickson LLC. I'm at 9336 Ashabar Road in Clarkston, Michigan. As Mr. Wynn pointed out, we've been before your commission and before the township board several times, dating back to 2006. In 2006, we did an analysis and, and I think it's notes that on the 121-acre site, 46 acres are, are in the lake, so the remaining 76 acres with the density bonuses under the PUD, this property technically by ordinance could support about 910 dwelling units. In 2006 and 2007, we had a PUD that was approved that had a total of 642 dwelling units. Because of the economy at that time, that wasn't developed. We had come back subsequently in about 2011 for some modifications, but nothing was, was built, and that PUD expired. In December and January of this year, we came back before your board. We came up, as Mr. Wynn described, with a new concept that has some rental apartments along the Auburn Road frontage in the Phase 1 area, which is in the southwest corner of the property. At that time, we had some substantial commercial development, about 13,200 square feet of commercial development in that corner, and some single-family homes along Hickson Avenue. Your, your commission, after a lot of discussion, had a unanimous recommendation for approval. We subsequently went to the board in February, reviewed it with the board for preliminary approval, I should say, and at that time, the board also unanimously provided a preliminary approval for the plan. Over the last few months, the transition from preliminary approval and submission to final submission, of course, we do a lot more homework. We work with our engineers, come up with the, with the realities of the site in terms of drainage and everything else. During the preliminary phase, we received an awful lot of comments specifically from the township engineer. Some of those things caused us to make some modifications to the site plan, which I'll go over tonight. Why don't I just start there? A few of the things that, that came to light were, there is an existing detention pond right up along Auburn Road, right about in the middle of the site. Our previous January, December site plan did not incorporate that. It was encouraged that we, we use that site plan, so we refactored the site a little bit to take advantage of that detention basin. It actually works out very well from an ecology point of view. We're going to re-slope the sides of those slopes, and that'll be a sedimentation forbey. All the water will go there from the frontage of the property before it ultimately is cleaned and released into the lake. We also began to look at the market a little more closely, and the reality is, is despite the fact that we had, as I say, a modest amount of, of commercial, about 13,200 square feet of commercial in the preliminary approved, approved plan, the market just doesn't seem to be there on that side of the street, despite going, going towards the highway. And so we've reduced the commercial by about 11,000 square feet. We're now proposing 2,200 square feet, or just one building on the corner. With these adjustments, we've adjusted some of the building locations, and as a result, the density has changed slightly. We are showing 18 additional dwelling units on this plan compared to that recommended for approval in January. We've actually decreased the single-family, single-family homes from 97, previously approved, to 85, and we've increased the multiple-family from 162 to 192. So it's a net density change of 18 units, but it really was just a function of shifting away from the, the decrease in commercial, making that sedimentation forbey work. And also, I should say that the engineering consultant encouraged us to use existing curb cuts, so the road alignment changed so that we could use existing curb cuts. Our proposed density now is still at 277 units. That's a little less than six units per dwelling acre for this Phase 1, again, compared to the 9.75 units that were originally approved in 2006 and the 10.8, which are actually approved. Some other things that we took advantage of with the final is, we really looked at your Auburn Road corridor plan. You've got, you've invested an awful lot of money in that, in that corridor. We've tried to enhance the landscaping, and so the landscape plan that comes in now really beefs up the landscape, not only with trees along Auburn Road, but also some shrubs and hedges that'll hide all the parking. I think it really will beautify that entire frontage. Along Hickson Road or Avenue, we did increase that buffer as well. We've, we think that we can save an awful lot of the berm that's there, an awful lot of the existing shrubs that are on there, and then we're, we're showing some substantial tree planting along that road. I will say that the engineer's review letter at this point points out that perhaps there should be a sidewalk along Auburn Road, I'm sorry, along Hickson Road. We do propose one along Auburn Road. If we're required to do so, we'll do that. We would prefer not to. None of our homes will, will front Hickson Avenue. In fact, most of them are set quite a distance off of Hickson. As I just said, we'd like to maintain as much of that berm and as much of that natural vegetation or vegetation that's there now. If we have to put, if we have to clear that road right-of-way to create a sidewalk, we'll effectively have to take down that berm and almost completely remove all that natural vegetation. So, again, we'll, we'll work with your department and we'll, we'll take some direction, but it would be our preference that a sidewalk would not be necessary along Hickson Avenue. Other things that were put into place, we've got some existing utilities on site. Our engineers are working with the township engineers and understanding how those cross Auburn Road. We've got a 10-inch sewer that we know we'll be able to take advantage of that used to go up to the old athletic facility that was on the site. We've got substantially improved circulation throughout the sites. We've provided a number of, of entrance points, again, taking advantage of the existing curb cuts, so that, that we know that we can get fire safety, plenty of residents in there. One limited curb cut on Hickson Avenue, the rest on Auburn Road. I believe that those are the, the bulk of my comments, obviously. We've got some new members of the commission. We're happy to answer any questions going back to 2006, or certainly back to January and February, and we'll certainly respond to any of the community's comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to the floor for the public hearing. The format will be as follows. The petitioner, which he already did, he made a presentation. The commissioners may ask questions of the petitioner, so Mr. Epping may want to come back up here for a second. The floor will be open to the public, and the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. So anyone from the floor, any commissioners want to ask Mr. Epping any questions before we go to the floor?
I do.
Go ahead, Mrs. Moore.
Hi. In regards to the number of the apartments that have increased by, what, 30 units? Do you think that the demand for that is there with all the apartments that have been going in? I mean, do you think that, you know, the leasing...
Wait, I'm sorry.
No, I guess I just, I'm under, trying to understand, you know, because 30 is a lot to me.
Right.
Maybe 10, you know, is not so much, but...
Well, we really do. We've, we've done market studies, which, again, not only led to the, the conclusion that we should reduce the commercial, but we're seeing an awful strong market for the apartment in, in this area of the township. We've provided some elevations. We're really proposing a very high-quality architecture. We've got brick along the entire first floor, stone going up at the entrances, high-quality siding and dimensional shingles. We have one- and two-bedroom apartments, some with dens. What we're seeing is, so close to the hospital, so close to M59 corridor, it seems to be a very strong apartment market. And what we like about it is it not only keeps residents in Shelby Township, but brings residents to Shelby Township that ultimately certainly could remain in the apartments for an awful long time, or move into the single-family homes either in other neighborhoods or within ours. So the, these units have 24 apartments per building, so really what we did is, as we shaped that, we essentially added one building and then one half-building, which got us to that, the total of 30 units.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Wynn.
You know, and what Mr. Epping is comparing is the difference between what was, he's presented as a preliminary in the final. I think maybe the more appropriate reference should be what was approved in 2006. Because in 2006, Jim pointed out, there were 642 units approved. I think less than 60 of those were single-family.
I think it was about 15.
No, there were some on the, on the lake, and there were more than that. But I, I think the reference here should be that reference, which was, this was almost all multiple-family. And while there's still more multiple units than single units, the land area devoted to single-family on this plan is, that's, that's the driver of this development, is the single-family. And you know, we were talking at the last public hearing about transitions, you know, and what, what the last plan showed was, on Hickson, the west side of Hickson, you have a single-family neighborhood, which is, you know, 60 and 80 and 120-foot lots, or 40-foot lots that have been combined in various forms. And then on, on the east side of Hickson, on the original plan, it was all multiple-family. So now, on this side, you have all single-family, and so Hickson Road is a single-family road now. That continuity, you know, this is, this is good design right here versus what we saw at the last, at the last hearing, frankly. There's, this is sensitive to the context and also sensitive to the market. You know, having a mixture, I think, is desirable for everybody, but I think the reference point should be the 2006 plan, because that's when it was heavily loaded for multiple-family.
Mr. Epping, Mrs. Moore brought up a good point about the apartments. There is a, there is a development on the south side by where Four Bears used to be that really hasn't gone anywhere, and that's an apartment complex also. I don't know what happened there, but there, we always hear there's a demand for apartments, there's a growing demand for apartments, and yet that one has petered out. I mean, what, I don't disagree with this, but what constitutes an increase in apartments to justify it?
That's a good point. In fact, we were involved with, in fact, this is Stone Ridge North, that development was Stone Ridge South. Those actually weren't apartments. They were designed a little differently, and they were designed at a different market, and unfortunately, right at the tail end of that market before our housing crash. Those were townhomes, attached townhomes, and they were actually, rather than just a, a flat unit, they were three stories. In fact, they even have elevators in them. So at that time, it seemed like that was a very good market choice, but those were for-sale townhomes with some high-end amenities, so the price point was quite a bit higher. I know that there's been some talk, I think that that property has changed hands a few times, and perhaps, you know, something in between a rental apartment and a high-end townhouse will ultimately fit in well there. But I think that, that was serving or aimed to serve a different market than what we're seeing here.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions for Mr. Epping? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Dallow.
For the housing, how do you see the housing, how sellable they're going to be, being right? I love this project. It's a beautiful project. Don't get me wrong. With the concrete company going there for years, that you really, they oversee everybody with the truck amount that goes in, out, in and out that street. How do you see these homes going to be sellable with that fact?
Well, because of, because of that existing facility, as it were, we, we kind of gave a lot of land away. You'll notice that along our entire western boundary, and particularly along the northern boundary in that corner, we've got an awful lot of open space, so we've kind of self-imposed a very large buffer for our future residents to, to account for that. We know that we're going to have to buffer it. We know we'd like to keep as much of the existing growth, green, greenery out there as possible. But we've set back from the road. The rear of our lots, in most cases, are an additional 45 feet of open space from the Hickson Avenue right-of-way to the back of the lot, plus then you've got the backyard and the homes. So I, so we do think that we can mitigate that, that existing use. You know, the reality is, is that there's some terrific homes in terrific neighborhoods immediately west of Hickson Avenue that have, have done well and, and have survived that use of that Ready Mix plant. So we know that there's a way to mitigate it. People love waterfront homes, and, and so we think we certainly have an advantage. It's a beautiful lake. We've set it away from Hickson Road, and we'll buffer that as best we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wazniak, go ahead.
Mr. Epping, yeah. A couple things. Did you get the letter from Paragon Ready Mix?
No, I just heard that tonight, but I did not see it.
Okay, but so, okay, you haven't talked to them at all?
No, we have not. They were involved back in 2006 and so, and some of those very same concerns. I think that they're obviously worried about more people complaining, and, and so, you know, it's, it's almost like when you build a home next to a freeway or next to an airport. If part of the real estate transaction is a disclosure, people drive around, and so I think it would be more difficult for residents to be there in, in a facility like that to come in. The reality is that that's there. We've heard different stories about it phasing out eventually, but our residents will certainly be aware that it's there. We're going to do everything we can to buffer it, and we'll just have to be good neighbors.
Okay. Now, this next question's a little more perplexing to me, because you're, you're talking about eliminating or not having a sidewalk on your side of Hickson. And I just see kids trying to cross the street where there's no sidewalk, perhaps trying to get where there is a sidewalk, and then we're going to have 300 trucks a day going up and down there. I think we're asking for trouble.
Well, we, we're proposing at, at the one entrance point, we do have sidewalks leaving our neighborhood and crossing at that corner, so that'll be a four-way corner. I don't know, if we don't already have kids going up and down Hickson Avenue, you know, our street is internal, it has sidewalks on both sides. Certainly, kids from this neighborhood could leave that neighborhood, and, and again, you guys are experienced planning commissioners and township trustees, you know, everything's a balance. And so we're not opposed to that sidewalk. I just want to point out the impact, that to create a sidewalk there, it really would create a significant amount of leveling off of the right-of-way, which is, right now, that berm starts almost at the road, so we'd have to clear back to the right-of-way, put in a sidewalk, perhaps it would even be a safety path, and then it would start to go right into our backyard. So I think we, you know, you might end up throwing the baby out with the bathwater there in terms of shielding the existing neighbors to the, to the west, but we'll, we'll work with the township on, on what we think is best.
Here's the irony of the situation, is that in our 2017 capital improvement program, the Hickson sidewalk is being put in on the west side of Hickson for $172,000. We're doing that for the safety of the residents. And then I'm looking at this development where kids can cross over, but we got 300 trucks going up and down. Now, if it was a quiet street, maybe, I'd go for no sidewalk on one side, but I really can't live without trying to protect this. And maybe it's an extra cost for you, but I think it's better for safety.
I, I, I can't disagree with safety, obviously. I, it's, it's something we'll, we'll certainly work with the township on. Again, from a planning point of view, I think it makes sense to have the sidewalk in front of the homes that, that front that street. Our homes actually, as I say, back that street and are quite a ways off and do have sidewalks on both sides of the front of those homes, but I understand your point.
If I'm a kid, I'm going out the back door and crossing the street, you know? I just don't want to get hit by a cement truck.
They're going in the lake. They're going to have fun in the lake.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. And now we'll go to the floor. Anyone from the floor wishing to speak for or against can come up, state your name for the record, and after you speak, you can sign in.
My name is Robert White. I live on 46561 Vineyard Avenue, Shelby Township. I live, my yard backs up to that, that lake you're talking about, that previous south project that never got finished, that started around 2005 or so. And my main concern, same things that we were talking about in the previous issue here, is that mainly is the traffic at the apartments. I don't think Shelby Township needs any more apartments myself. I mean, the area between West Utica Road and Auburn Road and Ryan Road and mound is nothing but multi, multi-person dwellings. I mean, we have so many people, so much traffic in our area, just from all the multiple living dwelling, multiple people dwellings there, that, you know, our, you know, Ryan Road and, and Auburn Road are already, just like all the other roads, and, you know, rush hour traffic, they're bumper-to-bumper from light to light already. And, you know, just like the other, the other site, it's going to be, even, even if you stay with our one, it's going to be 300 more units, and if, you know, you stay with single-family dwellings here, it's going to be more units and more vehicles and more everything else. But when you start piling in multiple, you know, 190 apartments, and there you're talking, you know, another 300 or 400, you know, cars at least, you know, just right on Auburn Road, right there, you know? And I live, I mean, my street goes off of Auburn Road, and it's already, you know, even if you don't have light on everything, it's hard to get out, you know, as it is. I just, just wanted, you know, it sounds like it's, it's pretty much snowballed. You guys are pretty much, you know, all thinks this is such a great idea, and I personally, I'm all for development and, and increasing the growth in Shelby Township, but, you know, Shelby Township, like we were talking about, it's all about properties. It's all about, you know, nice homes and, and single-family dwellings and stuff, and all these apartment complexes that are being sprung up. And, and once, once things are approved, I've seen it already, I was here for 2005 when they were talking about the development on the other development behind my house, that they approved something one way, and then, once they get the approval, then they don't always build according to the original site plan. I mean, there's, you know, we had issues with, on that lake behind us with the drainage. You know, they tried to say that was a, it wasn't, was a result of that complex that was being built there, but I lived in that house for 15 years and never had a problem with drainage from that lake, that lake rising or anything like that, and they started building that complex, and, you know, I see on that, the plan, it looks like there's some kind of a drain going right through the middle of the, the whole thing, you know, like, I'd be concerned that, for the properties there, for the homeowners there, that, you know, that was handled properly, the drainage for that lake is not affected, because we do have drainage issues with the, the lakes going down to the Clinton River and all that kind of stuff. So I just, I just, I'm opposed to the whole thing simply because of the apartments. You know, if they keep it single-family dwellings or commercial along Auburn Road and stuff, I'm all for it, but I just, that's my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we continue, you can come on down. I'm going to make the following comment. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this planned unit development request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will then make the final decision on the planned unit development request. Go ahead, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Jim Cable, 47169 Frederick Road. I'm kind of confused on the comparison of 2006 to now. It's like going to the doctor and saying, he says to you, "I was going to cut off two of your arms, but now I only got to cut off one." It doesn't make it any, any easier to take. I've got a couple questions on, on this Phase 1 of the, of the apartment complexes. How many total buildings are we talking about? How many floors per building? I'm seeing in the sketch, it seems like there's three. How many units per building? I believe you answered 24. And you're only going to have one- and two-bedroom units. Are these going to be on a septic, or is that a regular sewer? What's the projected rent for those units, both one- and two-bedrooms? What's your plans for the commercial area out front? The single-family homes, what's the projected value of those? Are they going to have basements? I probably assume no. And also, are those sewer-septic? And then I have some comments. I'm in favor of the, of the single-family homes. I think it's a great idea. The area needs it. But I'm highly opposed to the C3 multi-family side of it, and I'll tell you why. First off, as Mr. Turner has said on, on numerous occasions, this area is saturated with apartments. There's probably no less than 15 complexes within a mile and a half of this location, along with the one you just recently approved that's not even built yet, that's walking distance away. Number two, the traffic cannot accommodate this influx of density, especially with a Phase 2 and a Phase 3 on the way. Traffic is backed up nightly on Ryan Road from 19 to 23 miles, with cars stuck in the intersection, Auburn and Ryan. They can't, they got, they got it completely shut off to traffic going the crossflow. Number three, as I have been before you previously on this issue, I don't think I need to, to go into it to deliver the statistics of the escalated crime rate that's associated with this type of housing, especially in this area. It's, it's just unbelievable. Number four, I've got, as, as they noted in the prior agenda item, the schools. What are we going to do to accommodate all these people that are going to be in this area, especially with a Phase 3, Phase 2, and a Phase 3 coming? This, this type of housing attracts mostly transient residents that can vote at will on important township businesses and elections with no consequence to property values or taxes because they have none. As they will undoubtedly move on, leaving us, their folly is our burden. I will assume the lease rates for these apartments will be too high for the soon-to-be ousted seniors, yet low enough for the undesirables. I have worked in property management long enough to see how quickly a complex can turn to blight in this area. You wouldn't believe the damage that can be done in six months. Your motto has always been that if it's compatible with the surrounding area, it's acceptable. That translates to, if the surrounding area is crap, the more crap is acceptable. I realize this is already a done deal at this point, and as you've given in to the almighty Tax Revenue Board of Trustees, and I spoke with Matt, our assessor, he pointed out the overwhelming, and I repeat, overwhelming tax revenue benefit that apartments have over single homes in this area. The foot, per footprint, it's astounding. Just this morning, I visited this site with a few of my neighbors, and we, we took out some signs with us that describe this development, and the information is to this evening's I was greeted by steady strings of honks and thumbs up of support from passing traffic and no less than a half a dozen Paragon cement truck drivers, even the toot of a horn from a nearby Shelby Fire and Rescue Squad, who, by the way, I previously visited as they shared their concerns with me for the added density. A few neighborhood motorists and pedestrians stopped by to inquire about the proposed development, having no idea what was being considered, and were outraged. Mr. Dallow, you have mentioned several times that this township needs more multifamily housing, tax revenue. How about some of it in your backyard? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak? Come on down, sir.
My name is Ken Isel. I represent Paragon Ready Mix. We're located at 48,000 Hickson, right at the end of this development. I do not oppose development in that area, but I will say that we've been there a long time. There's been a concrete company there for over 50 years. We're not going anywhere. There are concerns about complaints, about the traffic. I have a concern about the noise, but we're there and we're gonna continue to operate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Collins, 2551 Howell. I've got quite a few issues here. You know, you're gonna build all these houses in a neighborhood that I've lived in for 61 years. My parents moved them in 1951, okay? I bought the house next door. It was built brand-new in 2002. And you guys have called it the ghettos of Shelby, okay? I take offense to that, and a lot of other people do.
I don't think anybody here has ever called it the ghettos.
Okay.
I live there, so I live in the ghetto with you, and I don't call it a ghetto.
Okay, well, I'm very proud of what I've built.
I agree. Go ahead.
But we have no sidewalks, no streetlights, no stop signs at any of the cross streets, and you're gonna put this influx of traffic in there? It's an accident waiting to happen, you know? And he said something about it in the sidewalk. When, is that gonna be done this year? He said 2017?
Yeah, the sidewalk on the west side will be installed this year.
Okay, we have no sewers. We all use septics. It's not an option for us. You know, you did all the landscaping down Utica, or down Auburn with a federal grant? It looks like crap. It's never finished. It's all overgrown. Half of it's dead. Mulch isn't there. It should be. And, you know, you guys put in approaches off, or when you reded Auburn Road, and you put them in conveniently where all these entrances are gonna be to this place. Was this already approved years ago when you reded Auburn Road? And why'd you put in approaches that go nowhere? I don't understand. You know, it's a waste of money, my money. And are they gonna do any filling on this lake? 'Cause in 2000, you were at my house, Glenn, when my basement flooded and all the other, everybody else in the area that had basements, huge impact on their homes, their values, their financial side of it. You know, in Stone Ridge, it was, you know, the south side, they built that. It's still unfinished. Why won't they, why don't you have them finished that before you tear up another piece of property? You know what I'm saying? I'm not against development, but finish what you started. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Come on down, sir. Mr. Isel, did you, or Isel, did you sign in over here? If you can do that, I would appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Shane Dewitt. I live on 46222 Vineyard Street, about a block and a half down for where this is going in. First of all, all that landscaping that you did along whoever paid for that, it's dying. The idea was really nice, but the follow-through for taking care of it isn't there, okay? I live on the side of the street, you know, across the failed complex, you know, that's there. A lot of, a ton was planned, but who knows where it's going. Okay, that's directly across the street, you know, coming, you know, the exit across from where you guys wanna build. I mean, and you're gonna dump on a road that's already, what I'm asking, I know you've guys planned stuff and you want it to grow, but please have some forethought, you know, and follow-through for where this is going and what it's gonna, you got all these things jamming together that isn't gonna work very well at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Cindy Warswick. I live at-
Hold the mic down.
I live at, my name's Cindy Warswick. I live at 2584 Collins Avenue. We're right on the corner of Collins and Hickson. And one thing I'm concerned about, I see there's a road coming out of subdivision onto Barkley, and I guess I'm just kinda concerned about all that traffic coming down Hickson in addition to all the cement trucks. And it's not just the cement trucks. It's the gravel haulers. It's the cement bulkers, as it is right now, right outside on our, on the part of Hickson by our house, there's a huge hole in asphalt every time those trucks come by, you know, they go banging and I, so I don't know if the extra traffic's gonna make it even worse. And I don't like the idea of all those apartments either. You know, we do have a ton of apartments. If you go down Dequinder Road, there's a huge, you know, many, many apartment complexes down there. I guess that's just my concern, the extra traffic. Otherwise, we're not really too opposed about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on down, sir.
My name's Rick Mount. I have two pieces of property on Auburn Road, 3626 and 3600 Auburn Road, Shelby. Questions I have, I didn't get a chance to come up and review the site plans and all that, unfortunately. I've been out much of the time. You're only addressing Phase One tonight?
No, this is a final.
But for Phase One, yeah.
Yeah, for Phase, yeah, Phase One, I'm sorry.
'Cause I remember back in '06, when you were talking about sewage, they were saying the line that came in to the soccer dome and that was too small to accommodate the development, and they had to bring it in from Ryan across Auburn. That is no longer required?
Mr. Epping, I, well, Mr. Epping-
We'll ask Mr. Epping that when he comes back up.
I don't know the answer to that. We'll find out.
Okay. What I understood is that you're going from 642 units down to 277 units? And that's addressing all three phases?
No, it's only one phase.
This phase.
We don't have Phase, the rest of the phases to the east are not being part of this.
And the two and three go, once again, to the, where the school property was?
Yes, and that, we have another public hearing on that when they come in with that.
Oh, okay. Just looking at the property here, it looks like it's addressing property all the way over, Messina's crushing operation, which would take you that far over. So I'm just concerned that you're addressing all the properties that are involved in one, two, and three here.
No, the only thing we're addressing is what's shown as outlined in actual buildings on this plan.
Okay, my misunderstanding there.
That's okay.
And this only goes as far as north goes to Paragon?
Right.
Okay, it does go all the way to Hamlin. Okay, I guess that's the only concern I have as far as the sewage goes. I mean, and the size of the line, can it accommodate the full development or just Phase One?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down, sir.
Chuck Jensen, 46039 Moral Court. I'm very close to Vineyard. I guess I just wanna reemphasize the traffic issues in the area. I know if I'm heading eastbound on Auburn, and I wanna make a left-hand turn onto Ryan, I'll have to sit there between three and five lights in order to make that turn. That's a really bad situation there, and I don't see that this is gonna improve that at all, and I would just like to add that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Come on down, sir.
Hi.
Hello.
Rob Bethoff, 46100 Vineyard. They changed a couple of things, right? Losing commercial, right, quite a bit of commercial.
Reduced, yeah.
Yeah, not very good, right? Less single-family homes, not good. More apartment, more apartments, definitely not good. We don't have a need for apartments. There's vacancies in everyone around. I've called before I can. So, mm. All right, it is, I'm against more apartments. Traffic is already horrendous in my area. It is not uncommon for both Ryan and Dequinder to get backed up from M59 to 23 Mile. I understand this is only Phase One, which means it opens a door for more apartments. So if traffic isn't flowing on Ryan or Dequinder, they will be cutting through my neighborhood, and that's a lot of traffic. That's about it. When you were talking, Glenn, about the multi, multiple family and the old plans, I think those were condominiums, weren't they?
We don't regulate ownership.
No, I'm talking about, they were duplex condominiums. They weren't a bunch of apartments around for the-
No, there were, there were, there were several different types of multiple-family dwelling, and, you know, they may, they may have been referenced as condominiums, but it wouldn't matter because we can't regulate who owns a property.
Yeah, but that's, that's what it came through as. They weren't apartments. All right, that's it. I don't like apartments. I don't like apartment people. I've been around here for a while. They don't care about the area. They lower my property values, so, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, you've already been down to speak. We can't go back to the floor twice. Sorry about that. Anyone else wanna come on forward and speak? Hearing done, we'll bring it back up to the board. Mr. Epping, you wanna come back up? Tried to cover a lot of these questions they raised. First, we'll go to the one that has a lot of questions, Mr. Cable. You talked about total number of buildings. I think you mentioned that.
So as it relates to the apartments, we have eight buildings. We have, they are three floors each. The larger buildings have 24 units, and then we have two buildings, which are essentially half of that, so two at eight and six at 24. They are served by sewer.
Lease rates or the rent?
We don't have any projected rents right now. We do know that it probably will be, you know, obviously commensurate with the area and the upper end of that. There'll be obviously brand-new construction, well-advertised. We have a clubhouse with a pool, so we expect them to be, you know, a really nice place. Typically in this area, we expect to see a lot of young professionals, probably a lot of medical people from Beaumont and the surrounding area. Typically in areas like this, we don't see a lot of school-aged kids or young children in the apartments. We do expect them to be more of the professionals, but again, it, the market will dictate that, but the rents will be commensurate with new construction.
What about the commercial plan? Anything for that?
Commercial plan, we have, we're essentially showing one pad at 2,200 square feet. It does have a drive-thru, and it has parking around the building. We don't have any leases. We do think that that is a desirable corner. It is on the to-work side of the street, but in terms of approvals and everything, that building, that use, will all come back in to the township for permitting and approval.
Now, in the R1B, we need, know the value of the homes? I'm sure they're on sewer, and then will they have any basements?
Tricia, I guess I don't know the answer to the basements. So what she had said there, for those who didn't hear on TV, they may have walkouts. The water table is obviously high, even though it was a quarry, so they will either have limited crawl spaces or perhaps no basements. The homes are gonna range between 1,600 and as much as 2,000 square feet. They're all designed to have two-car garages with a minimum of two cars in the driveway. The road widths are 28 feet back of curb, so standard road width, so there'll be street parking. We don't have price points, but again, that's kind of dictated by square footage. We anticipate really kind of beautiful architecture. We've added some renderings here. We anticipate this to have more of a, you know, kind of a shoreside feel to it. Some brick, some stone, but an awful lot of nicely appointed siding, white trim, kind of that new urban coastal look to it. We think that'll be very appealing next to the, to the lake.
What about the size of the sewer line? Is that gonna be adequate to take this development?
So Phase One is, as we've pointed out, completely to the side. Phase One is about two-thirds of the developable land on this property. There remains about 26 acres. We're working with the township attorney, I'm sorry, well, ultimately the township attorney, but township engineer, and our engineers, urban land consultants. We've got a 10-inch sewer that goes in there. We think that that is adequate. We've done the studies. Fazal Khan provided some comments on that, so we've got some verification that will be part of those conditions. But yes, the existing sewer will serve Phase One, Phase Two, and Three. We'll have to understand that engineering as it comes. Ultimately, there was talk about bringing it down Auburn Road, but we don't think that'll be necessary for our project, you know, maybe part of the larger master plan, but the existing sewer will take care of Phase One.
There was a question about filling in the lake. Is that gonna be happening?
Some, I don't know where that mic is, but-
It's right here.
Right here.
I think everybody can see this on TV. The single-family homes on this lower area do require some fill. This is, our engineers are working with this. This would require DEQ permits, all the other typical permits, but we are envisioning some, some fill on that lower area. On the multiple-family part, on the commercial part, no fill is required. The site plans that are in your packet actually denote the existing shoreline and the proposed
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Winn, yeah.
Just on the, on that filling question, the gentleman who spoke about the flooding in the area is correct. There was some problems in that area. We used a substantial amount of our block grant money to build an outlet from Quarry Lake north along Ryan Road to the river. One of the problems with that lake is it's a man-made lake. There was no natural outlet for it. So the problem with the flooding was created because there wasn't that outlet, so, you know, that's been taken care of. I haven't heard any problems since we did that, which was about five or six years ago.
Since you mentioned block grant, what about this landscaping on Auburn, and they were complaining it looks bad?
Well, it does look bad, and we had-
Responsible for maintaining that?
Well, we're gonna maintain it. We also, we had a problem with the first phase, that we wanted the mulch added, and the county wouldn't let us amend the grant, so we have money this year that's gonna go back and redo all that and put the mulch in and put some edging along it as well. And then we'll be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay.
We'll arrange to have that done.
Okay.
Can I have a couple of comments?
Go ahead, Mr. Winn.
Just want to offer two just general observations that you have to, you know, when you talk about the apartments and the single-family and a PUD, the base zoning of this is not R1B. The base zoning of this property is R10, which is a multiple-family. That was zoned years ago. It used to be light industrial. So, you know, we've gone from light industrial to multiple-family, and every plan that's kind of been presented is nudging down closer to the more, more single-family. So I think, you know, you have to put that in context. The base zoning here is multiple-family. So they could come up with a site plan for multiple-family. There'd be no public hearing. You know, they could approve, we could approve a plan for this. So it's the mixture of uses that's triggering this. Also, you know, we've, you know, we've had a lot of comments to people, that people said about the land uses along Auburn Road and the blading influences, and, you know, we've been, we're aware of that. We're working to try to alleviate that. I give you two examples. Auburn Road and Ryan Northeast Corner, that building has been sold, and we had identified all the violations, and he's fixing that. And now you see storefront windows, that's gonna be improved. The old Rite Aid's, Planned Rite Aid site at Auburn and Dequinder, that building's been removed through the efforts of the board and Building Department and our department. So, you know, we're trying to alleviate those blading conditions. So this site isn't exactly something that's pleasant to look at either. So it's a question of what do we want there? I mean, it, you know, we'd like to have, I think this kind of mixture is a good balance. It's, you know, I think it reflects some market realities, but to say no to that is living us, putting us back to a point where, you know, you're gonna probably live with what you see for an extended period of time. I think this is a reasonable proposal, and again, considering the zoning of the property and what was presented before, I think this is much more compatible than anything I've ever seen in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions?
the public health, safety, and welfare; and the adequacy of public access to the site. The planning commission may recommend approval, disapprove, or table to evaluate information we've received this evening. And a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion...
Mr. Seiko.
...to recommend approval to the township board for Site Plan 17-30, PUD 2, Tricia Basso, Auburn Hickson LLC, for Stone Ridge North, based on the following. Number one, the final site plan is consistent with preliminary plan approved in January 2017. The design, number two, the design provides appropriate land use relationships within the project and to the existing development in the vicinity. Number three, the project achieves the PUD objective of encouraging innovative site and building design. And number five, a revised plan addressing all department comments must be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department for final approval. And number six, proposed deviations from existing zoning ordinance standards are modest in scope and may be allowed as part of the PUD approval process.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. DeSeiko, supported by Mrs. Moore. Any questions or comments?
It's a quick one.
I do have, go ahead, Mr. Wozniak. I'll go ahead.
I just, I'm still concerned about that sidewalk, so I won't be supporting the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Winn.
If the motion was to reference the department comments and the engineer had recommended a sidewalk, so they'll have to put a sidewalk.
And also, there was a recommendation, well, said a traffic study may be beneficial. I think it would be probably strongly useful.
I think it would be useful to kind of see how we, how the timing of this works and which way they would go, so.
Right.
But, you know, the recommendation is, the recommendation of the engineer's a sidewalk, and that's part of this.
Okay.
I think we can work through those design issues in appropriate way to address safety as well as Mr. Eppich's concern with transition.
Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll. Ms. DeSeiko?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, planning directors report. Mr. Winn?
I have three things. The first is our capital improvement plan. It's a six-year plan that we're offering for your consideration. This process is an annual process where all the departments in the township submit proposals for physical assets that either have a five-year lifespan or a value of $10,000 or more. And that could include new buildings, land purchases, roads, sidewalk, utilities, et cetera. We're required, the planning commissions, by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act to review plans for capital improvements that relate to the master plan. So we've identified 18 projects offered this year, mostly carryover items from previous years that have some relationship to new development, roads, utilities, et cetera. And so what we're doing is asking for your favorable considerations before we move it on to the township board. As we adopt the new master plan, you know, sometime later this year, there'll be much more relationship between the master plan and the CIP. There's, the idea is to use the CIP to help implement some of the recommendations in the plan, so that over the next few years, you'll see a stronger linkage.
On the plan, what is the Phase Three of the Auburn Road landscaping? Is that just adding the mulch?
Yeah, two, two things. When we, when we did the design, the bid for the Phase One didn't include mulch. We asked the county, well, can we just do as a, an amendment to the, you know, the bid, which is not an uncommon process? Well, they weren't flexible enough to give us that opportunity. So second phase got the mulch, first phase didn't. So this year, I said, we're going to go back. We put more money, block grant aside, to go put beds, edge the beds with everything and mulch them, and then I, you know, we'll have to go to the board to kind of get a plan to, to have somebody come in and maintain it every year, but I think it's worth that investment, and we have the money to fix it for this year.
Okay. Need a motion on this, if any would like to make one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the projects contained in 2017, 2022 Capital Improvement Plan as each of these projects are consistent with the master plan and other approved planning studies.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dallo, supported by Mrs. DeSeiko. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSeiko?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Chair, if one...
Go ahead, Mr. Winn.
Could you put those boards up, Scott? We have a, before I get to, Scott's going to put up two boards, but I want to talk, we have a master plan public hearing scheduled for the 19th of next month, July. It'll be in the lower-level conference room, starting at 6 o'clock. The first hour will be like a walkthrough with display boards so people can comment more casually, and then convene the meeting formally so people can offer public hearing comments on the record. So I'll send you the notice. Both of them, please. So the Grupo Antilin Site Plan, which is the one, that big building that's being constructed now on 24 Mile Road and Shelby Parkway, they, they approached us about adding some additional truck wells on the south side of the building. So the plan on the right shows where the truck wells are, so I have the, the site plan on the top, the building elevations on the bottom. There are 18 truck wells on that side. What they want to do on the left-hand side is add eight more truck wells. So it's shown there. The only thing they displace is some planned parking, which is overflow parking, which frankly, they don't need, or they said they don't need that. So they have more than enough parking to suit their needs. They provided us a letter. You know, they're obviously moving forward really quickly, and I thought if you had no objections, since nothing else is changing, I would approve this administratively. It's, it's only a matter of the truck wells. All the access is on that side of the building to begin with.
Anyone have any objections?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
That's all I have, thank you.
Do you have anything else? I thought you had three things. That was it?
No, that's three. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Any other business from the floor? Come on up.
I just wanted to say, I can't believe you guys voted for that used car lot. That, that, that area around there is starting to look like 8 Mile. There's, there's probably five or six used car lots up and down Auburn Road and Ryan Road, and I believe you just approved some more lots on Ryan for one of the existing used car lots. 8 Mile. I don't know if any of you drive down that way and open your eyes. It's, it's a mess. I, I don't, the blade initiative is, you're getting rid of the old buildings, granted. The new stuff you're letting in isn't any better. I just can't believe it. I think with this Phase Two and Phase Three coming up on this next project, you guys better take a long and hard look at what's going on down there. I know none of you probably live down there except for maybe Mr. Turner. Shameful, shameful for you for approving half of the stuff that you guys approved down there.
Mr. Winn?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to have to respond to that.
Go ahead.
You know, I, so here's a gentleman on that, first of all, the property that was represented earlier for the, the existing auto repair facility, he's owned C2, he's allowed to have auto repair, he's allowed to have used car sales. If he owes over a certain number of vehicles, then we require a site plan to add some more landscaping. So somebody comes to our counter and says, I want to improve the site. So we have two choices. We can find a ways to restrict him or limit him from improving, or we can try to find a way to help him achieve some objectives. This isn't a greenfield site. We're not starting over. We're trying to find some middle ground that'll offer some relief from what exists already out there. So I guess what Mr. Cable's saying is, I should, next time they come to the counter, we should say we're not interested in helping you. Mr. Aliff has spent several hours at that counter with the site plan, trying to get him to fix it up, to add some amenities that don't exist on the site. So to suggest that we're not trying to do anything is a real misrepresentation of the facts, and frankly, I resent it, Mr. Cable.
Well, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do anything to help him.
Address, address the chair, please, Mr. Cable.
It's just that, to help him out in a way that's, that's, he's not even understanding. I don't think he understands what you thought about him having cars with no plates on them. I think he was dodging that issue. I've, I've known that, that, I go by there every day.
Really why?
Up and down that street, how many people have cars on their front lawn for sale? I, I go over with, with the, with the, the other department, the co-enforcement on cars that are parked across the driveways. I've got a guy down the end of my street, he's probably, he's planning to have his drive, his front yard paved, so he can have all the cars on his front lawn. It's just ridiculous. I just hope you're aware of it.
Here we are.
And I'm sorry if I offended you, Glenn, I really am.
You did.
Sometimes small steps can make big differences, and I do agree, this property does need some help, but if we can get some organization on those vehicles, I don't know why there's no plates on them, but if we can get them organized better, maybe that's a step in the right direction. Because I do agree, the corridor does need some help, but it's going to take some time, and we have to start somewhere.
Well, we need to start somewhere.
They are starting.
And I say, I'm not saying that stuff hasn't been done. I just want you to take into account, when you're, when you're taking down stuff that is, that's been offensive for so long, that we don't put something in there that's, has the potential to be just as offensive.
Mr. Chairman?
I agree with you on that.
I'll give you one other example.
Go ahead, Mr. Winn.
That building at Auburn and Dequinder that was taken down, that used to be owned by Rite Aid, took 11 months to get that turned down.[1610.73]